The Bellingham Planning. First, I'm the agenda this evening is a continued public hearing on the 152 Depot Street warehouse. My understanding, Jim, where we see them updated sound peer review?
That's right. Good evening, everybody. Yes, so that in your package this evening you for 152 Depot Street, you have an updated sound peer review in response to the board's comments and concerns regarding the proximity of vehicles, the sound wall and and the closest of butter. In addition, I believe the applicant has been looking at a few other minor additions to the plan set based on the board's comments. And it'll be interesting to hear their feedback since the last meeting. And I believe this evening is really just an attempt to really wrap up a number of items that the board has been really working through over the last few months.
Okay, also understand, Jim, we're receipt a letter from Don Di Martino.
Yeah.
Depot Street intersection.
That's right. So yes, thank you. So yes, you do have an updated letter from Don Di Martino addressing, you know, kind of what the the thought process is with Depot and Hartford Avenue. And you do also in your package have a public comment from one of the abutters as well.
And that information from the abutter, I believe, has been entered into the record, correct?
That's right. Yep. And we'll certainly include it as an attachment from the minutes.
So at this point, what I think I would like to do is have our peer review respond to the sound study and also a discussion on the sound wall.
Yes, I'd be pleased to do that. This is Greg Tachi, Kavanaugh Tachi Associates, Missouri, Massachusetts. I have prepared a letter that was dated March 9. And this morning, thought that it would be easier to explain certain of the results tables by combining figure tables 2A and 2B together into a single table. So I would like to use that in my discussion tonight. That was, as I understand, circulated to the board.
You can take over the screen, sir, for your presentation?
Yes, I'd be pleased to.
Okay.
Do you see my screen showing figure 1A? Okay, it says I'm screen sharing. Are you able to see this figure 1A, please?
Yes, sir. We can, I believe, the audience can position themselves if they want to see it.
Please let me know when you're ready.
We're all set, sir.
Thank you. There, this is Depot Street. Here is the proposed warehouse. The circulation works this way. Automobiles will come in here and park in this auto parking here. Trucks enter from Depot Street, do not go around the east or the northeast side of the building. They stay on the southwest side. And if they need to, they would go a turnaround through the turnaround in order to return back out to Depot Street or to back into the docks. The features of the computer model that were used to estimate the sound levels transmitted from sources on facility site to nearest residences, I've shown three of them here, 226 Depot Street, 228 Depot Street, and 230 Depot Street. There are others also, but these are the closest ones of likely most concern. The red line again is the truck loop that they use in their computations to determine truck sound levels at nearest residences. At this location here, there's a little red spot there. That's where Tech Environmental had placed their hitching and backup alarm sound. And from that, they've determined what the sound levels were at the residence and and determined that these barriers were needed. The barriers that Tech Environmental recommended were 10-foot-tall barriers. This first one was six, it says 60 feet long. I guess quite right. It's a, and this one's 110 feet long, both of them 10-foot tall at about those locations here. The in their model, they included foliage in this area here, which has got foliage now. So that is, you know, a feature that was included as a propagation loss for sound, sound transmitted from these sources on the facility site to these nearest residences. Now, one thing that we did take quick look at is what the elevation of these residences are above grade. And we looked at Depot Street, Google image, a street image, and basically adjusted those a bit, raising them, causing these barriers needing to be a little bit taller. And I'll go through our revision to the model model in a minute. The sources that they use, we agree with the position of the sources were acceptable. We did add sources, the heights of sources above grade were acceptable. So that for the most part, the only so large change that we might have had to make it, maybe it's not all that big, is to raise the heights of some of these receptor positions. This is our adjustment. Yes, question?
Do you want to raise the height of what, sir?
Yes, the these receptor locations above the ground. The way computer modeling works in CADNA is that you enter the topography, but the topography doesn't reflect the the height of the receptors above ground because first floor receptors typically seven feet above ground, gray level. And two stories would be about 17 feet above gray level. So that just using the grade levels that come in from the topography would end up giving you receiver position that is lower than that would actually be the case. Is that maybe what I could show you is a Google Earth image? Just one second.
Certainly.
This is a Google Earth image. It's Depot Street. The site is in this area here. This is the nearest residence 226 Depot Street.
And I don't think it's showing on the screen. I might be mistaken, but I don't, I don't believe the shared screen is switched on.
Let me, let me reshare. So I know new share. Hold on one second. Are you seeing Google Earth image saying long-term measurement location at this point?
Yes.
Yes, okay. This is Depot Street. The site is in this area here. The entry to the site is down here somewhere. This is 226 Depot Street, the nearest residence. What we can do is move this out of the way. The residence at 226 Depot Street is a bit tall. We put the receptor location up at this elevation. We estimated it to be 27 feet above the grade. This is the grade here with the lines. The land actually drops off a little bit behind in the backyards of some of these residences along here. So that it is kind of necessary to to make an adjustment to reflect where the actual people would be that would be receiving sound levels. This also is important in terms of barrier design because at upper locations, we don't want to have a situation where you're overlooking a barrier that is too short onto the site. So the, and it's necessary the barrier break the line of sight between a receptor and a source on the site. So that if the receptor is up tall, you know, far above the ground, there's a chance that a barrier that might otherwise serve a good purpose of screening sound for a person down at grade level up on the third story may have a problem overlooking overseeing that onto the site, looking at those new sources. So it is necessary to account for receptor elevation above grade level. Any other questions about this?
Yes. So are you indicating that we need to update the receptor locations and raise them?
What I did is I did that in the software. Okay.
And do the sounds meet the requirements in Bellingham?
They they will with they will with the the following changes. And these are the changes that I'm recommending. First, this barrier along the the auto parking needs to be extended up to this point here. And the barrier that they had sort of dogleg here right here needs also to be extended a little bit. The heights also need to be taller. This needs to be 17 feet. This needs to be 15 feet, largely because of the need to raise this because in in making the adjustment to reflect what we saw in Google Earth in terms of elevation of the upper story above grade level. When I did that, the barriers that were originally specified by by Tech Environmental seemed to be a little bit short in terms of sound attenuation. So in order to improve the sound attenuation, to bring the sound levels down at at 226 Depot Street, I had to raise the barrier and extend its length.
So in essence, you remodeled that in to your calculations?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
I also was able to remove the barrier that was here. It didn't provide any practical reduction. And so I actually just removed it. So now we have just these two barriers, 17-foot tall by 225-foot long, and then 15-foot tall by 120, 120-foot long. I also added a truck idle at this location along with a hitch and backup alarm that Tech Environmental had included in their model. I have also added a truck pass by since trucks would come into the into the turnaround as they're entering the the turnaround. There, the nose of the tractor is facing the nearest residences. And so for that reason, I think it was necessary to make a test as to whether or not that was a problem. And it turned out to be a driving force in terms of setting the heights and lengths of these two barriers. I, we also had a number of other minor adjustments that really aren't terribly significant. But what I'd like to do is is to show you tables 2A and 2B summarize the results. But they are better summarized in a replacement table that I provided this morning. And if you could turn to that replacement table that I'm showing here on the screen now, I'd like to describe what the data is and what its implication is. If Tech Environmental had placed barriers on the site.
Two people in the audience, I can go from here, I will cover it. If you want, I think the discussion may be fairly quick.
Shall I proceed? Or are there any question here that I can answer?
No, I'm just having the audience look at the what's on the screen.
Okay, very good. For the backup alarm at 226 Depot Street, Tech Environmental with the barriers that they're recommending proposed that would result in a limit of 43, a sound level of 43 dBA, 1 dBA below the MAST DEP limit. Okay. At 27 Hartford Street, it was at 29 Hartford Street, it was 30, they calculated 33 dBA for the backup for the backup alarm with their barriers, which would comply with the lower of the two ordinances, the Bellingham Nose Ordinance, which is a limit of 45. So where these levels all fell below the lower of the two limits that they found that the facility would comply with respect to backup alarms. Now, when I raised the residence elevations to the heights that I had gathered from looking at Google Earth imagery, I found that this sound level was actually about five dBA higher with the Tech Environmental barriers. And so as a result, we end up with these red levels where these levels exceed the lower of the two applicable regulations, MAST DEP and Bellingham Nose Ordinance. If for the backup alarm, when we revise the barriers to make them longer and taller, the the backup alarm sound level dropped below the two applicable limits. This consideration of TE's barriers were adjustment to receiver heights and using TE barriers causing sound levels to be in some cases unacceptable. And then a third case where our barriers are included in the model to bring sound levels down again. This is done for the backup alarm, for hitching impacts, for acceleration of a truck leaving a parking location. And then idling, which we had added, and a truck in the turnaround. So by using the barriers, by installing the barriers that we had recommended, all of the sound levels would fall below the required limits. And now, you know, there is one thing that we want to be a little, a little careful about, and that is what is the actual nighttime usage that this might have? And that is a consideration. However, there's no tenant here right now, so it's not really known what the nighttime usage is. But it is something that might cause barriers to be reconsidered where there to be a tenant use here that was daytime only. Now, I don't think that any tenant would ever want to sign a lease for daytime usage only, in which case, to protect the community, these barriers would be necessary. But those are, that kind of argument might possibly be forwarded and is something that the board may want to consider, but that's outside, you know, our consideration here because the tenancy is not known at this time. So this is the result, and we do stand by the recommendation to raise the barriers. I think Tech Environmental did a good job in setting up the model and so forth. But there were a couple of things that needed to be further considered, receiver height and barrier height. And those two were significant enough to cause the barriers to change in length and height in order to comply with applicable regulations. If you please answer any questions.
Yeah, I would like to start. Brian?
I don't, I don't have a question. What are these barriers going to be made of?
There are many different products. From an acoustical standpoint, the only that these barriers are conceptual. They need only be four to five pounds per square foot. That can be achieved with wood. It can be achieved with plastic and metal, masonry. There's a lot of different products out there that will serve that purpose. They need to be tight to the ground and need to be continuous and solid without cracks. For example, a stockade fence is not acceptable. If crack area is too great, it has to be, the cracks need to be sealed so the wall is continuous for its specified length.
Thank you.
So I guess the, for peer review, you mentioned the nighttime. So the modeling that you have here does not apply to the night?
No, it does. This is based on nighttime sound levels, as it says here.
All right, thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. The other question I had was the truck turnaround, the positioning of the truck turnaround. Can you put that up on the screen?
Yes, I'd be pleased to.
Please.
This is the truck turnaround in this area here.
Yeah, moving that closer parallel to the building, does that gain anything? Like that that location, is there, would there be anything gained by the truck turnaround being adjusted?
Sure. Let me suggest that if you brought the the turnaround down so that that the building shields the turnaround, that would be to a large extent, replace the height, reduce the height of these barriers, if not, replace them altogether. But it certainly would probably reduce the height of the barriers. The only problem is, is that if you brought the turnaround further southeast, what would happen is the turnaround would not be able to serve these these docks right here. There may be some latitude to bring that turnaround further southeast and still be able to serve these docks. But that's the purpose of the turnaround is to allow trucker to back up, being able to look over his left shoulder at the tail of the trailer.
The letter that we got from you is that from the ninth, is the applicant had a chance to review these suggestions and?
I have sent it to them, but have not heard. And I apologize for their, you know, the short amount of time they had to look at this, but I have not heard back from them yet.
I'm sure we'll have back to them this evening.
Okay, I guess that's it for me.
Just one question, actually, to the engineers, is extending that wall, is that equal that that's going to affect the site plan at all? And any?
No, there would be zero impact to the site plan, short of modification to the wall. Everything else would remain.
Okay.
I just have a question for the peer review. Is, what's the normal height of barriers that you sort of work with? Like a 17 feet, abnormally tall, average, low?
We try to cap walls at at 30 feet, which we think is, you know, unsightly problematic, but it's necessary to reduce sound levels. So 17 feet is is tall. Not, that's certainly tall. But it's not as tall as some of these sound barriers get.
And this question might be for Jim, but Jim, do you know if Dunkin' Donuts has a sound barrier? And if so, how tall is it? Or if not?
I can hear them right now.
I don't believe Dunkin' Donuts has a sound wall, but I can double back and confirm for you.
Okay, thank you.
For the comment made by some of the audience, I don't think the project at Dunkin' Donuts was as heavily vetted as this project has been, and I'll finish to this board. So I think, you know, we've come I'm just saying, we were looking at a lot of things.
No, no, I appreciate that.
And, you know, we're trying to do the best we can. I apologize. Things weren't as thorough back then for people and neighbors.
You've been nothing but fair with me.
You know, I apologize for that.
I just wanted, before we continue, I questioned the trees that are, the foliage is there. I mean, it's, I can see the lights from Home Depot right. Dunkin' Donuts right now. So I mean, how 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 good could those trees be? So I don't know if that needs to be taken into consideration, but just.
Okay, we can get to that in the public comments.
No problem.
I can respond about foliage. We removed it from the model and just had a ground absorption of one, as if it were a grassy field. And the reason why we did that is because of winter conditions and so forth. And, you know, foliage is always hard to evaluate for its, how continuous it is and how dense it is. So we have, in this case, removed it from the computations.
I think that should address your question in a positive sense. I have a couple of questions. The wall that you removed, did that provide any screening at all?
I, none, none in this this area. It may provide some screening for a truck running at this point along here, but the truck is closest at this point here. And so that's where we placed our noise source and and barrier heights and lengths have been computed based on the position here. A position back here, yes, could have been screened, but this this also screens. So we thought that it was, having two barriers doesn't improve the situation. In the case of two barriers, the barrier with the the greatest attenuation is the one that is acting.
Okay. For the applicant, is it feasible to find a balance, actually for the applicant and the consultant, to move that turnaround area to an optimal point where we gain some coverage from the building for sound?
That's.
Still getting the coverage of the height?
Yes.
That's sweet spot.
Good. Yeah, no, that's a, that's a definite consideration that that can be made, should be made, and would have a benefit.
I think the applicant is open to, am I able to look at that?
We can take a certainly take a, take a look at that. If there's a benefit to sliding it down some and kind of keeping the flow of the site plan.
Yeah, ideally, what I'd like to do is pick up on the advantage of having the building, getting some of the sound back. And I I think there may be, you know, a couple of sweet spots we can find that that may may accomplish that. Sir, I want to thank you for a very thorough presentation.
You're welcome.
It is much appreciative. What I'd like to do now is since we discussed it some length, I would like to open to the public any questions they have solely on the sound information they've been provided so far this evening.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, real quick before.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so there is a question on here from Mr. O'Hara, I believe. I don't know if he, if you would like to unmute and ask it, or I can ask it either way.
You can ask him.
Okay, yeah, it's Mike O'Hara. So I can't tell from the visual on the shot of the plans there, but if the wall is tight to the pavement, right, adjacent to the pavement, the sound barriers, the walls?
Yes.
Then, and you said, I believe, in your presentation that they need to be tight to the ground to be effective?
Yeah.
So how are you going to plow? And what's, what about water runoff and rain runoff and stuff? Where's it going to go if you can't have drainage and or a gap? And I don't think they're going to plow right up against a 17-foot wall, no matter what it's made of, to take a chance of hitting it with a plow. So it sounds like there might be a little issue with keeping that air clear and drained.
With respect to draining, no, if we had a two-inch clearance, that would be fine for drainage. And but the wall would have to be moved away in order to permit snow storage and plowing.
And I I'm assuming the applicant will take a look at that in terms of how runoff will will come off this wall and into the system they proposed?
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions from the public? I want to move on now to a letter that we received in regards to, from Don Di Martino in regards to the Hartford Depot Street intersection. Does the applicant have an opportunity to review that?
Yeah.
What do you, what is your interpretation of the letter? What is your interpretation of the letter?
I think it's our position that we had a mitigation package of $250,000 that we had offered to the, to the town. We could either install a signal at the existing light as it, that geometry of roadway as it stands today.
Yeah.
Or we could provide those funds towards a larger intersection program, should the town so desire to do that.
Okay.
So, to construct the, or reconstruct that entire intersection really isn't something that the project should or could feasibly do. It's a much larger endeavor than this project could certainly handle.
Okay. So with that in mind, Jim, how old was it, when was that, those figures determined by Don?
Yeah, those, those were some years ago. I don't have it right in front of me, but I would estimate at least five, six years ago, if not greater.
Okay. My point is, our town engineer has looked at, looking at intersection, replacing the signals, has come up with a different thing. I, I think we're kind of like in your proposal to be very far. So I think as we discuss the impact, I think we may be looking for some more money for that signal to be set aside over time.
We can certainly take a look at what he provided. The number he provided, I think, was for the major overhaul.
No, Jim, Jim, was it a 425 for a lesser overhaul?
So the, the discussion from Director DiMartino was regarding, yes, flowing out the intersection slightly greater than just adding lights. And talking with Don DiMartino, though, you know, even that was somewhat of an interim step. And, and hearing some of the concerns from the residents and those using Hartford Avenue, I think, and, and at least my discussions with them, was that he would prefer or recommend, as well as the town administrator would recommend, funds to be used as essentially a private, private partnership with the town in order to do a holistic approach, not just at the intersection, but the quarter, as we were talking about at the last meeting. So, but the number specifically was regarding the intersection and a slightly larger intersection with lights. And I believe what the applicant is referring to is that their number preferences just strictly adding lights.
Okay. That's true. Hey, Matt?
Sure.
Jim, the DiMartino letter talks about a comparable location, and it indicates with very minimal geometric changes. So that's the figure that's listed there is without, the way I read that was without major changes to the roadway, right?
Right, well, yeah, I guess that's relative. Yeah, I mean, not, not doing a full-blown redo of the intersection, meaning many of you are probably familiar with Maple 140 and how we had to adjust the geometry of that intersection. I think what Don's proposal there was of the lighter version was simply some slight widening so he can get a, maybe a turn lane in certain areas along with the lights.
So, and there's anyone else on the board have any comments? Before I run?
So I, I think that the light is sort of a critical component of how this warehouse could potentially work. And my thinking about it is when trucks are to return to, back to the facility, they are, I believe, modeled to come off of 495 to take a left, right? So without a light, they would be, we would be adding to that to having a big truck take a left across 126. Right, so if we delay, sort of the, we wait for the funding from the state to come and assist the town in doing it the right way, that could be some number of unknown years, right, Jim?
Yes, certainly. Going after state funding is somewhat of a, of a risk, and it certainly could be over, over a period of time, absolutely.
Dennis?
No, I'm concerned about the timeframe, but.
Okay.
Jim, I think it was recently posted on our, on the Bellingham website that 25% design improvement plan from MDM. I think you're, you know what I'm talking about?
Yep, yep.
So that's, that's the full board design? That's not what Don DiMartino is talking about, where he got that number?
No, that, that is what he's referencing, is MDM's study from, again, maybe even a decade ago now. They've been looking at this for, for some time now, and so that, that, yeah, that's the one he's referencing there.
And I guess what I'm, what Don, like that letter that Don sent us and the figure that he came up with, that figure was a scaled-back version of this 25% design improvement plan? Is that correct?
Or? Yeah, I mean, it's slightly scaled back, but again, it's somewhat relative. I know that 25% design was ultimately going to, at the end of the day, achieve much greater with, again, geometry and drainage, I believe, and, and other aspects. This, that, the reduced one wouldn't do all of those features.
Gotcha. All right.
So I think, you know, we need to, you know, to discuss mitigation further, maybe today or later on. You still have no idea around the tenant, correct?
That is correct. There has not been a tenant identified.
And I know initially, you indicated that you thought this could be a nine-to-five operation, and you fell on your sword, so to speak, instead of you made a mistake. And I, we were all disappointed, as was the town in the error. Although, you know, minor at the time, it might have been, to the town, it was rather significant. We need to talk about spreading the traffic over hours. And I think we need to be realistic. In this current economy, it's, it's not, and our consultant mentioned it, it's not realistic of a warehouse, not operating 24/7. And I know you'll agree, and we'll get it from the public in a few moments. I think we need to have a more robust mitigation. And I think I can sit down with Jim and look at that. I think there are some things we need to delve into, and some of them are as follows. I certainly don't like to negotiate in public, but at one point, you put on the table that you would donate some land to the DPW, a certain triangle?
Correct.
Is that still in play?
Yes.
Okay. What I would like to discuss, and I think it's very viable, is having you donate to the town 148 Depot Street in lieu of going to 24 hours. So that can never be developed, would be donated to the town, and that piece of property in perpetuity cannot be developed unless it's used by the town. So I'd like to put that on the table, as we want to discuss how we move forward. Board members, have any comments on what we discussed for a more robust mitigation program?
No, I think it's, I'm in agreement that there shouldn't be further discussion.
Yeah, I, I agree with you. I, I think there might be an opportunity for operations to continue at a facility, but we proved 24 hours a day, but the outside activity will be limited to some hours, some window of time. So people that can enjoy their, their waking hours at their home and not hear the, the sounds that they might hear or a facility running 25.
I concur with that. Also, I'm going to throw an outlier to you, and I apologize, it just came up at a recent meeting. You should probably let your tenant know that we're going to look at, in our discussion, that you have to adhere to the Mass Only law. Obviously, you've agreed not to put any vehicles on the street. Everything will be on-site. And the outlier, and I apologize, I did not think of it earlier, the tenant will have to develop some type of system in accordance with the Massachusetts state laws to remove snow from the top of the vehicles, similarly exit your vehicle, your property, that the snow is, you know, no longer on the top of the vehicle. I know, as of five years ago, the consultant of transportation industry, the state commercial enforcement division, the state police, gave you, I think, about an 18-month leeway on that. And now they are definitely ticketing people, especially trucks and cars that do not have the snow removed as the hazard proposes. I think it's a fairly simple solution, once you find out who your, you know, your tenant is, to make sure that it's safely done and removed from the top of the vehicles. And again, I apologize for not bringing that to you earlier. Now, I'd like to open questions from the public? Do you want to hear any questions? Yes, we are, I believe.
I think Joe Antonellis would like to say a few words.
Mr. Antonellis, Attorney Antonellis.
Good evening.
Good morning, sir.
Good evening to the board. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate you.
How was Florida?
It's wonderful. It's wonderful, but it's, but I'm not retired, so.
Okay.
I'm, I'm still very busy. I wanted to just take a couple, an opportunity. I hope what I'm about to say doesn't sound like a speech or a closing argument, but I, I do want to bring a few points up regarding this board's involvement in the project, my applicant's response to the board, excuse me, the applicant's response, my client's response to the board. And I, I'll say some things very carefully. I, I think that this board is one of the more sophisticated planning boards when it comes to major scale developments that I've practiced before, and I've been at this now for over 35 years, and I've spent a lot of time in Bellingham. And I think the residents in Bellingham are well-supported by the staff at the town hall and by your board in general. The quality of your peer review consultants is among the best that I deal with. The extent that Mr. Tocchi has done in his review of the sound issues has been significant. I can't imagine anyone looking at it more conservatively and more in favor of the town. Again, a town that has its own noise regulations. We appreciate the effort that he put in. I might, and our sound engineer might have a couple of academic disputes regarding how he modeled the heights, but we're going to let that pass, and I can tell you that we will adopt the recommendations that he's made relative to the height of the sound walls. I had a conversation with our client this morning, and I've advised him, as I have all along, that this board is very, very concerned about protecting the integrity of the neighbors' privacies and that, and I believe that the plan that we are presenting will meet all of the local bylaws, specifically the sound one. So, Mr. Chair and to the board, we were, we're going to react to Mr. Tocchi's letter in a favorable way, just as we reacted to MDM's letters and suggestions in a favorable and cooperative way. I don't think you found any pushback from the applicant in that regard. Relative to the mitigation package, and I agree, it's difficult to negotiate a mitigation package at a public forum, and I'm not sure that that's the place to do it. But relative to that, Mr. Chair, I will tell you that I will address the request for the donation of the land with my client. I think that what the public needs to know is my client does not yet own that land. He has a purchase and sales agreement with multiple provisions and multiple options. We've run it up the flagpole, because I'm cognizant of how this board tries to protect its citizens, and I believe that there is a significant chance that I will come back with a favorable reaction to that request, Mr. Chair. Relative to the triangular parcel and the monetary offers that have been made before, as John said prior to my beginning this, this, this conversation, those are still on the table, they will remain on the table. We would like to move this hearing forward to closure. I don't mean to rush the board in that regard, but I do think that relative to the plan, and I, I know that, that Mr. DePietro is on tonight also, and he has been very thorough in his review. I don't think there are too many outstanding issues as it relates to the civil engineering, and I'm hopeful that we can wrap all of this up in a timely fashion. I don't know, Mr. Chair, that it's advantageous for us to respond to the citizen letter or some of the citizens' comments, because frankly, I believe those are questions that are being asked of your peer review consultants. Because again, as it relates to the interchange between the applicant and peer review, we've responded directly to them and through Jim, and I believe that our responses to your peer review people, to your consultants, to people upon whom you rely, have been forthright and have been done in a timely fashion, and we are willing to continue that exchange. But I think for the sake of timing and for our own presentation, as it relates to the public, Mr. Chair, I'm going to leave that to your discretion as how much you'd like to leave for the public to ask and who should provide those answers. But at this point, I really think that's going to be for your peer review consultants to answer those questions.
Okay.
With that said, Mr. Chair, thank you for the opportunity. Again, I didn't want to make it sound like a speech. It probably did, I apologize for that. But I, again, if there's anything that you believe the applicant has failed to do that's been requested by peer reviewer staff, then certainly please point it out to us. And I think John and I have the ability to make sure it gets answered in a timely fashion. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it. Jim, does Mr. DePietro want to say anything?
I'll make my little discussion very brief, based upon the discussion at the last public hearing and the comments of our peer review letter. I think those could be addressed either through conditions, often which are standard conditions from this board, or through additional conditions and some minor modifications to the site plan. So I think that's really what my comments summarized would be at this point.
Thank you very much. So now I'd like to open up to the public.
I'll do it. Well, good evening. General David DiDio. I'm here, or on Zoom every time. I appreciate what you were saying earlier. I do appreciate that the board has, I think, asked great questions. This is very thorough and really been, you know, on top of trying to do what's best for everybody. And I, I do appreciate that. I know other people I've spoken to feel the same way, so I thank you for that.
That's our job.
Huh?
That's our job.
No, I know, but still, like you said, in the past, Dunkin' Donuts is loud and terrible. I can see their, I can see their lights in my backyard right now. So, that's why I knew the tree thing was not right. Anyways, I appreciate the 148, because ultimately that would close it down. I understand that, no, the attorney says they don't own it, but they can buy it if they have a plan, so.
Again, just direct to the board, not to the applicant?
So my, 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 my real question is, with this, with this light, right? My front yard is going to be a parking lot. It's going to have more trash. I mean, as it is in the morning, sometimes with the, with the, with the. I mean, as it is in the morning, sometimes with the stop sign there, sometimes a lot of cars are like at peak time. But trucks constantly are stopping either right in front of my house or in between my house and the next house down idling.
What's your...
I'm two-thirty. So towards the warehouse. So my property is basically telephone pole to telephone pole. So there'll be either right in front of my house or in between the two houses. But I mean, there are lights and they're slamming their doors and everything like that. So I know what it's like to have a truck sitting literally right in my front yard. So I'm concerned that with increased traffic with this facility, it's going to be constant trucks in my yard. If you go forward now, in the last meeting, there was a comment about how the developer had or hadn't offered money to residents. They have offered money because they offered me money. So I can confirm that because they absolutely did. And I know they confirmed it to others because other people told me that they did. I know obviously there's nothing written, but it was verbally offered me money as mitigations, sound, etc. I believe the developer, not the developer here, but the owner, I guess I would call him, specifically mentioned specific trees that he had in his yard that he felt were good for sound mitigation. But, you know, that's besides the point. I know that that was offered. My next question is, if we go forward beyond what was offered, can the town do something, maybe provide stockade, have the developer provide stockade fences or something, at least, you know, along the frontage of my property? So that as there are trucks idling, fumes, sound, trash, literally coming into my yard? I'm not going to be able to open the front windows to my house if there are trucks sitting parked, not parked, but, you know, waiting for a light for who knows how long. I don't know what the timing is, etc. They're going to be literally in my front yard all day long. It's going to be impossible to get out of my driveway, especially if I want to go left. Maybe I could go right and come this way, but if I want to go left to Hartford Street, that's going to be pretty tough because they're going to be queued up, I'm sure, right at the exit of my driveway. So that's going to be a huge concern for me. And it just, I know that the Mendon and Hope Dale potential warehouses aren't necessarily in our purview. Or is there a way we can get the state involved in looking at, you know, further how bad that traffic is going to be? I don't know if you're aware, but there's, I believe, and please don't quote me on this because I don't have the exact numbers. I believe close to a million square foot of additional warehouses between my house and right to the other side of the Hope Dale Airport, which is like a mile, less than a mile and a half anyway. So, yeah, their sound isn't going to get me, but even more trucks are going to be going down Hartford Street. So I don't know if, again, I understand that this isn't this project. I don't know what kind of purview you have over it. But Hope Dale and Mendon aren't going to see, their town resources, water, etc., as we call it. But they're not going to suffer from that additional traffic. Bellingham is going to suffer for that additional traffic. So I don't know if that's a mastioti. I don't know how that can all work. But we can make all the plans in the world we want for lights, etc. And then they're going to put those in and literally just drop a bomb into what we did. And it's going to be, it's going to be, I can't imagine how bad it would be, a million square feet. I mean, that's got to be insane amounts of traffic.
I've heard similar numbers. I think one of the things that we discussed tonight was putting the money in reserve so we can try to solve the problem when we do it, potentially once and for all, and not do a stopgap problem. Because it's like retiring a street and retiring it four years later. Yeah, we want to prove that as best we can. That's why we're trying to look at the mitigation, you know, for the lights to determine the best avenue to go through. Unfortunately, over time, everything has moved out west. 495 is, you know, after all these years, it's become very popular. I think you'll agree, a lot of the traffic that goes from one way or the other on Hartford Street is mostly passed through residents.
Yeah.
A lot of it's not Bellingham residents.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, you know, that's unfortunate.
It's light.
I understand that, but I wish there was more we could do.
I know, I know. Like I said, to your credit, absolutely, there's nothing you can do about people. But if we're adding big warehouses, then there's something we can do about that. Our town, as well as Hope Dale, as well as Mendon, that's something that can be managed, mitigated. You know, maybe not twenty-four hours, etc. I mean, there are ways to manage this.
I think that's something we have to look at in a group of towns together that's beyond the scope of this board.
That's why I was saying I wasn't sure how that all works, if we could get the state to know how that. I understand that's...
Yeah, we can discuss that with, you know, perhaps the town manager or elected officials down the road to see what we can do to get a better voice, to represent something to the State House and get, you know, more elected representatives to support us as we move forward in that.
Sure.
I think that's something that is a big picture that we should look at as a town and as neighbors. But I don't think we can solve that problem tonight or the next six months.
I was just wanting that to be...
However, what I would like to ask you to do, and I know he's made references that you've met with neighbors, and you're trying to mitigate their concerns. I know the perception was you were trying to buy people off. Could you just clarify what you're doing?
I would be more than happy.
So we can get it from your viewpoint, please?
It was very clear.
I'm not saying he's incorrect by any means.
I wasn't saying that they were trying to buy me off.
I'm not saying that.
I wasn't...
No, but some people had that perception on Zoom with the last...
I understood what they were trying to do. They were trying to say, hey, this is going to be, excuse my language, shitty for you. Can we maybe, you know, give you some money to, you know, build something or put something up to make it less shitty? It was the feeling that I got. I didn't feel to be a buyout.
Look, it's all right. One of the few people can get away and say that right now, I guess.
I appreciate that.
Perhaps would have worded that a little bit different. I was very careful to...
That's all right.
What I said or didn't say, based on my tongue. But essentially, the developer, the whole process has been very open. And at the request of the board, we did reach out to some neighbors and ask, say, what we do in the spirit of cooperation and mitigation and talked about potentially put trees up if somebody needed that. And we did speak about that. And that was something that was discussed. It was absolutely not a buyout or anything.
I understand.
As you know, I did want to clarify that.
Okay.
So I don't see what would change relative to seeing if it can work to provide some sort of mitigation on Jones' property that may help at the end of the day with the concern.
As well as other neighbors, I assume they've already reached out to him, correct?
Yeah, we can certainly talk to everybody.
And it's not our place to delve into that.
Yeah, absolutely. We reached out to him before. We can certainly continue conversations.
Okay, I certainly appreciate that. And I believe you will appreciate what...
Absolutely. I didn't think for a second that it was a buyout. I just want...
I understand that. But people were left hanging in the air. And I just wanted to clarify that.
Mr. Chairman, I think we do have a couple of questions here online, if you'd like. If I may, you know, the presentation tonight, you know, addressed sound and barriers around that. I know the general public has had a six-month opportunity to express their grievances and concerns. But if there's nothing new to add, if you could please limit your comments to the presentation at hand, we do have a full night.
There's one minute?
I'm sorry, Diane, I believe you had your hand up first?
Yep. So Diantra Cat, live at forty-six Box Pond Road. Third-generation landowner, been through everything, through Dunkin' Donuts, Best Buy. I'm only four hundred feet from Best Buy. I know you talked about the wall. I get lights shining through into my bay window at night because we don't have a high enough wall. And the way the lights are tilted, they're just shining into our home because there's no trees. There, you know, all the leaves are falling off. So I know when you talk about the wall, I would definitely go higher and actually do more towards other residents because it's going to have a great effect on other homeowners at the other end or on Box Pond Road and Box Pond Drive. It is very noisy at Dunkin' Donuts when you walk the power line. So I just wanted to stress that as one concern. The other thing that has never been brought up, and I'm curious, is the way this property is being developed. It's along railroad tracks. Now Mendon has railed their stuff coming through on Monday nights at ten o'clock like clockwork.
Yeah.
Is there any purpose or is there going to be down the road that all of a sudden this warehouse is going to start using the train tracks to rail in product into their DC? And now we have a train running Monday through Friday.
I think you can get a definite answer this evening on that, sir.
Critically not. The grades wouldn't work for that.
And then we can make that, you would not object to that condition?
Would not.
Okay. So they don't plan to do it?
Okay.
It will be a condition in the decision as we move forward.
Okay, thank you.
You won't. Anyone else on Zoom?
Yes, the gentleman who is not Holly, if he was like to unmute.
Yes, I am Holly's husband, Steve, fifty-eight Box Pond Road. Just with regard to the noise study that was done, I just want to point this out, you know, as an observation that regardless of the noise study and if the decibels come in two, three, four, or five decibels below whatever the limit is, you know, just please keep in mind that folks are still going to hear noise from the building. And it will be during its course of operation, albeit it may not be at the, you know, at the higher levels, but it will still be heard. So the point, I guess, is not to eliminate noise for a butter or those that are close, but just to reduce the noise. But that doesn't mean that they're not going to hear it, you know, throughout the course of the day. I live on fifty-eight Box Pond Road. We hear trucks banging and clanging across the other side of the pond. I don't even know where it's coming from. So just keep in mind that, you know, that's still going to be an annoyance for those that have to hear it. And then the second thing I want to bring up is, I know it was briefly mentioned about the intersection and the money going for the light. Just once again, I don't know ultimately what that would look like at that intersection. But please keep in mind that anything less than a dedicated left-hand turn lane will not do justice to that intersection and will make it worse, anything less than a dedicated turn lane. And then lastly...
We'll keep that in mind, sir.
Okay. And then lastly, before a decision is rendered, we do have a letter we want to give to the board, just kind of outlining everything that I brought up before, along with the petition with everybody's name on it. So we'll submit that to...
Thank you for it, Jim. I appreciate that.
Okay, and that's all I have.
And I appreciate your input all the way through this. And we're not going to make a decision this evening, obviously.
Right.
We want to continue on your support. And thank you for your support.
Okay.
Yeah, we have Mr. Hebert.
Hi, guys. Bill Hebert, fifty-six Box Pond Road. I'd just like to discuss, I mean, we're only talking about noise, so I'm going to keep it to that. Like Steve was saying, we can hear everything backing up as it is right now. Now, this place is going to be going twenty-four seven. So that means when we're trying to relax and enjoy our yard, when all the other places close, like, I can't wait for the place to close over here because I can hear them literally stop backing up at a certain point, six fifteen, those guys are out of there. Okay? These guys are going to be going twenty-four seven, no matter what. Anytime we try to enjoy this lake back here from now on, for the rest of our time here, we're going to be hearing twenty-four seven. We're going to be hearing those noises when I'm sitting here trying to relax after work. And everybody, you know, anytime I get a little break, that's what we're going to hear at all times. I mean, at least if this thing's going in there, can we just help the residents a little and make it just a regular, you know, eight to five, nine to five? When everybody else is at work, do your duty and whatever. When we all get home, can't we just at least listen to quiet that we do have in this neighborhood? What little that we have left here from all these? I mean, I don't know if you guys zoom out on that picture and see how close that is to another warehouse. It's, you're cramming as much as you can onto this street for what? A little bit of money towards a streetlight or whatever. It's just, it's not enough. We need more from this developer if he's going to be putting this much more hurt onto our town. He needs to stick more into the town. I love the fact that, sure, if he gets that back and you can block off 148, that's going to stop from a lot of noise coming to the residents. But twenty-four seven, it's just ridiculous. It really should be stopped. I mean, from the first meeting, we heard we're going to hold them to fact about that twenty-four seven. The first thing I said was not a chance, not a chance that you're going to do a nine to five. And here we are again, fighting it, that it can't be a twenty-four seven for some reason. And they don't even know the tenant. So it's just ridiculous. That's... I don't know. And the developer's lawyer or whatever, trying to just wrap this thing up and rush this thing. And, you know, he doesn't know how far he wants to hear the people talk about this or whatever. Well, we're the people that live here. We're the people that are going to have to listen to this. Nobody else here is right next to this. We're the ones that will have to listen to that. So our voices need to be heard and...
We're letting your voice to be heard, sir.
Right.
And we encouraged that from the beginning.
Okay, that's...
We certainly have not shied away from that at all.
Right. I just really want to hint on that twenty-four seven, at least give us a break. If this thing is going to pass, just give us a break and shut down at regular hours. Get the trucks out of here for the night. But I appreciate you guys listening. And you guys always listen to what we have to say. I know we get angry at times, but it's just, we've had enough. We've had enough in this neighborhood. But thanks again. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
We also have Casey here.
Then we'll go to Mr. Hamlin. Casey?
Hello.
How are you?
I'm doing well. And you?
I'm doing fine. Thank you.
I had a question, obviously, the presentation earlier today. By, sorry, I don't have my notes in front of me anymore. By Mr. Tocchi was about the sound. I said a question because a lot of them at my house show right at the level. Does it wind up being, are there any instances where all those sounds kind of happen at once and it goes above the level? I'm not, I haven't practiced enough doing math to do it quickly to figure it out on my own.
I'll ask Mr. Tocchi to address that.
So I'm just wondering, like, is there a chance that if multiple sounds are happening at once close together, would they go above the forty-four? Or has that already been calculated into that table?
I understand the question. And the question comes up all the time. Because there are a lot of things going on. But the observations of that these events, event sound levels are very short in duration. And the likelihood that they would occur simultaneously is very slim. And also, the source that's closest to the receptor, if it's the loudest, is going to dominate. So that the contribution of the further source, the source further away, could be negligible. Now, where this might happen is an event occurring with a truck idling. And we've always assumed that when a truck idles, that its nose is facing the residents. But in fact, that isn't always the case. So it is not, customarily not appropriate to add these together. If anything were to be done, and I think it would be a slim chance, is to add some of the louder events like the truck turnaround with a truck idling. But of course, trucks aren't supposed to idle for more than five minutes in the state. So that again, that likelihood of those occurrences at the same time is negligible. And so we have not included it in the computations.
And I think if you've heard us with the... And I think if you've heard us with the, uh, whoever the tenant is, regardless of the hours they operate, they'd be reminded that the, uh, to enforce the mass idling laws. That, that's not a choice. So that, you know, hopefully will reduce that exposure as best we can.
I guess I was just concerned, like if there's the 36 bays, you might have a truck idling and then it turns off, but it's simultaneously the truck next to it is now idling. So it wasn't so much the same truck idling for an extended period of time. Just with that many bays, you could have a truck idling and then another truck idling and then another truck idling as well as a truck turning around and hitching and that sort of thing. Um, but that answered my question. So thank you very much.
I would also like to further comment that, uh, trucks idling at the, uh, at the docks are highly screened by the building itself. And, uh, and also the, uh, nose of the truck is pointing away from those depot street residences. So, uh, the likelihood of it being an issue is pretty slim.
All right.
Uh, can I just, one, one comment you raised, I want to pick up on it. And what I'm going to say will not make me popular in town to certain people. Um, when you have a bunch of vehicles idling outside your, um, house to the people on Depot Street, make a phone call down to the police department. They're not supposed to do that. Uh, I know it may not be popular when they stop getting, receiving the phone calls. But then there's a, a law for that and that's why it's enforced. So, you know, don't be afraid to, you pick up the phone. And, um, let it know, you know, let it be known who they are. I can tell you, I feel pretty confident that you've heard from the applicant. Again, regardless of what times they're operating, they will not, they will not, any vehicles idling on the street and the tenant will enforce the mass idling. So I think right now what we have, and I may be reaching a little bit, is a majority of those vehicles, I think we can assume may come from Best Buy that are idling. And, uh, as we said earlier, um, in hindsight, things could have been vetted better back then. But now I think we just need to approach the, um, safety officers at the last meeting to just try to, you know, remind them periodically to enforce that. And then I think, you know, once they start ticketing, um, we're, we'll get out that they're not allowed to do it. And once we can stop them from idling and reduce the amount of time they spend on Depot Street, hopefully that will reduce the amount of trash that is thrown out of the vehicles and whatever those bombs were that are being turned out the windows that were mentioned going back to, um, November. Mr. Hamlin.
Yes, I, Mr. Jim, I was just curious if anybody's given any consideration to the, to, to the cumulative effect of those two warehouses that exist now? And then adding this one, is there any way you can address the cumulative effect of the noise with three warehouses now instead of two?
Jim, can you address that?
Mr. Hamlin is referring to noise, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. So actually, Mr. Tocchi might be able to, in general terms, uh, reference it. I don't know if it's touch, if you heard that, uh, the three warehouses there, Best Buy, Dunkin' Donuts and this proposal. Would there be a way in which the applicant could generally capture that, that noise and understand if it meets the current state?
What, uh, the, the work that we have reviewed is with respect to, um, applicable limits. Now, the Bellingham limit is a fixed limit. The Mass DEP limit is based on the existing ambient, which would include uh, sound from distant, uh, sources like other warehouses and so forth. So where we had turned the clock back, uh, before, you know, the significant developments period over the last 30 years in Bellingham, you'd probably find that the sound levels were lower. And so in a sense, there is a accumulation effect which is reflected in the background sound levels that were used to establish mass DEP limits. It is a complicated question. How do we keep, uh, uh, you know, sound from escalating naturally as facilities get added and the background, uh, becomes elevated uh, with more and more activity added. That is not a, a small question, but the, um, the, the, the elevation of sources that were previous to this project uh, is in part reflected in the background sound levels. How would that, how would that be dealt with? Well, uh, it would be a matter of, of developing an argument for a lower background sound level than was measured uh, by, uh, tech environmental. That becomes the baseline to which the mass DEP uh, noise policy is referenced, which may end up leading to a lower limit than 44, which has been included in, uh, the tech environmental work.
Greg, could you, uh, just, I noticed that, well, the limits, the Bellingham limits are 60, the DEP limits are 44, they're, they range differently. But could you give me an order of magnitude? What does 60 dB sound like?
Um, two persons speaking, uh, three, five foot apart. Uh, that voice level on average is about 60 dB. The thing that I hate to do is when I do that, it, it's out of context. What I can tell you is that for a residential area that already has levels as low as, uh, uh, the, the 30, 30 to 40, 60 dB would be loud. That's a significant elevation over the, uh, the existing. Uh, that's how, uh, communities complain about sound. Their reaction to sound is based not on how loud the, the, uh, the source is, but how it compares with what's existing. So the existing background sound levels are in some cases with 34, giving you a limit of 44, 60 would be a lot louder.
Thank you. Mr. Hamlin.
Thank you. Another thing that I'm wondering if anybody's taken into account is and I'm not indicting this company, but a couple of years ago, Jim got involved along Dennis Frame. That concrete company isn't quiet. I'm not saying they're violating anything. No, but Jim will confirm to, I think it was a year or two years ago. The noise coming out of there was so loud and so demeaning that my wife will attest, the house shook. Part of the bathroom was like, the fixtures that's from the concrete company. They were doing something blasting of concrete that had to be chopped up and cut it out. But I mean, that can happen anytime that, this is not a factor there. And that, that affects Hartford Avenue people, Weatherfield Road people, even beyond to Nixon. And the, that, that, that company isn't verified from the intersection of Hartford and Depot. So that's another noise factor that I don't know if anybody's given any consideration.
Jim, we spoke about that yesterday, correct?
Yeah, I did. I know the chairman did ask about any recent, uh, noise complaints and Mr. Hamlin, I did bring up that, that location as a, somewhat of a chronic one for many years now. Uh, not just from yourself, but from others in the area. Uh, the one good thing, um, now I know you're, you're referencing their noise concerns, but, uh, this, this entity would not be anything related to that as the town did put in a bylaw a few years back, uh, regulating, um, outdoor storage or bulk storage. Uh, so that type of use would not be allowed at this location whatsoever. Um, but yeah, certainly understood that was a, uh, certainly a, uh, uh, issue that took a lot of time for myself, the safety officer, and, and more specifically the building commissioner.
And that has been tightened up, correct, Jim?
It has, to my understanding. Uh, you know, I certainly can sit down with Mr. Hamlin and, and get his opinion as well, but I know the building commissioner has spent a lot of time in trying to minimize impacts, uh, from that, that established side.
So that, that was a concern I had as well, sir.
Yeah, the, uh, the building inspector did get involved, but over a period of, like, uh, it wasn't just one summer, it was a couple of summers.
Yep.
And I, I went to Dennis and I said, I thought this was fixed. This problem and it re-occurred. And then Jim got involved and then the building inspector got involved. Not a problem right now.
No, we are looking to it and it is. It, it, no, it is being monitored. That has been tightened up. Anyone else? So I think we need to, um, continue this to a future date. Um, what do we have for options?
For options, we have the 24th, we have two hearings. Prospect Hill Estates, we need to open, get into that. And then we also have 353 Maple Street, which is a warehouse. So that's for the 24th, um, April 14. We have 206 and Keenix Street. So we could do it on April 14.
Gentlemen, um, the applicant and attorney, Antonio Ellis. Is the tent doable for you?
Jim, is that okay with you? I'm sorry, I've drawn it. Are you, are you okay with that relative to the engineering?
Yeah, from the engineering, there really isn't any engineering. So it's pretty we can have a plan tomorrow.
And then you can, uh, you reach out to people and you can get back to us a little over a month on what those negotiations have involved.
Um, sure.
Relative to the mitigation package, Mr. Chair?
No, relative, relative to, um, the names you've approached in the past and where that stands.
Understood.
Yeah, we, we can do that. The preference, I think, would be having that outside of the, the public forum, but.
No, no, that's fine. But just the results, or, you know, just say that it's been accomplished. We don't want, we don't know one of the details. My mother would say, you don't want to see how meatloaf is made. You just want to enjoy the routine. So we'll leave it at that.
Well, I would say, Mr. Chair, we'd like to get back quicker, but I understand the complexities of your schedules and the necessity of opening and moving hearings along. Um, I think we could be ready earlier if there was time on, on an earlier meeting, but if not, the 14th will do.
We have Prospect Hill, which hasn't opened. Um, so that's probably going to be at least maybe 40 minutes, 30 minutes or 40.
And I suspect we've had a lot of public input.
We probably will have a lot of public input. And then we do have 353 Maple Street.
Which we'll have.
Which we have to review.
So, so I don't think we have a rather robust schedule on the, um, 24th. So we'll have it the first item agenda on the 14th when we do that.
Appreciate being first on, on the agenda that evening, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
You're welcome. It may mean an early tea time for you, sir.
Uh, those, those are limited, too busy.
Uh, anything else? It'll be the 14th. To everyone here and, uh, on Zoom, I, I want to thank you for your input. We value your input. I think you've heard and throughout this whole process, that, you know, we are listening and taking your advice into consideration.
Mr. Chairman, did we do a formal, uh, motion to continue to April 14?
And I will do that right now. I nominate a motion to continue this public hearing until, uh, the April 14th meeting. All in favor of motion to continue April 14, please signify by saying on. Opposed, that motion passes, you may rest. Thank you very much. And as you exit, if you can just be quiet, we have some more business to do for the people here this evening. Thank you very much for showing up. Anyone here need a break? Just give us a couple minutes, I'll be back in a second. Jim, is a continued public hearing on, uh, 206 Mechanic Street. I believe the board is in, um, receipt, Jim, of a peer review by BSC.
Yep. Yeah. So in your package this evening for 206, uh, Mechanic Streets, you should have um, an updated peer review from BSC in terms of, uh, traffic. Um, and Frank DePietro from BSC is certainly here to discuss it. I know the applicant also has been working diligently on the comments that have been, uh, that were received since the last meeting. And I believe have a slight, uh, a brief update. Um, so either, either or for the applicant or for the board, if you would like to hear from the applicant first, or if you like to let BSC go.
I'd like to hear from the applicant first, Jim, then hear from our consultants.
So, uh, for the record, John Cusack with Board Engineering. Thank you, thank you. Um, here Brandon Barry from, from our office and the applicant. Our development, Wayne Finnegan. Um, so we were before you last time, and I apologize, Paul Feldman on the, on this as well. We were here before you, last time, went through the full presentation. Had responded to comments that we received from, uh, from peer review on the, um, uh, the civil side of things. Uh, we had a good dialogue relative to some comments that the, uh, the board had brought up at that point. The one thing, again, to reiterate, we are fully committed to working with the board relative to the welcoming, uh, Bellingham side with hearing feedback that the board may like to see a stone side with a, with a wood face. We will provide some renderings and show that. And again, we'll work through the, the, the board to provide what, uh, what the town looks, looks best. Um, beyond that, we heard a couple of comments on the, um, the site plan. I just want to run through you really quick just to see if it meets the intent of uh, what I heard that I thought you were asking for, so we can work that into a final set of plans that get submitted to the board.
Sure.
So first off, uh, the landscaping plan for the, for, on the site, uh, I need permission to share. So the first comment that we heard, I think Mr. Salisbury had brought it up, was when vehicles were traveling on Mechanic Street from, from the center of town, heading towards Franklin. Uh, it was, you know, what's the, what's the view? Can you provide something there? Provide a little bit more, uh, screening of that, um, angle of the building, which doesn't show up on this plan. What I responded with was the budding building is pretty much screened. It's, I think it's 20 feet off the street or 70, uh, but it was still requested, you know, maybe come look at doing something a bit more. Yeah, that's a good vision. That's the corner of the building. Stuff up there and it's traveling down. You know, it really just blocks a whole bunch of it. But the question was, well, what happens with this area? What do you then see when that building's not blocked? So what we discussed and what we added was along our driveway here, we've added a, uh, fence right along here, screening anything coming in this direction with the, uh, the dock area. That was the main concern. What I will add is that the docks approximately 10 feet lower from an elevation standpoint from the, uh, from where the road is here. So we've got the fence up, up higher. Everything kind of comes down. So we've screened it in that regard. Uh, while we're on the front of the sheet as well, um, I don't recall where this comment came from. But again, we have a berm on this side. We had the, the wall that's located here and it was requested if you could somewhat connect those two berms, the berm and the wall with additional landscaping to boost that up some. So we've added additional landscaping really in this area to tie those two components together. The last comment that we heard was on the rear of the site. Again, if it's something we can provide some sort of a buffer this way. Again, we discussed, we're adding, uh, Green Giant, our buddies, those are the ones that grow very tall, staple. Again, we discussed, we're adding Green Giant, our buddies, those plants that grow very tall, staple year round. And again, additional fence behind that on the side as well. From a site plan standpoint, that's the comments that I interpreted from the board. I would like to roll those into the ultimate chat that we submit back to you, but I just wanted to make sure that we interpreted the comments correctly.
I think that was correct assumption from the board, as also from some of the residents.
Yep, that is correct, the residents brought them, I think they're the rear one.
Yes. And did you have a chance to reach out to one of the residents?
We did, and we, being Mr. Wallace, I did not introduce, actually, I apologize.
Do you want to pull up a chair, sir?
I don't, there wasn't a, I don't want to speak for Mark, but I don't think there was ever a connection made. They connected, the butter was going to think about, to Mr. Wallace, is going to think about what questions he had and get back to Mr. Wallace. But I don't think you've heard.
Okay.
So we have reached out and.
I appreciate it. Any other new additional information?
I don't really do it.
One other thing that came up, John, was the letter that was sent to the butter to clean, to maintain the drainage basin.
Oh, yes, I actually forgot to submit that to these guys. I will forward that, you asked, Mr. Chairman, about the.
Do something so we could document.
Yeah, so, so Mr. Finnegan provided that to me, and I had forgot to submit that to you, so I will get that to you if you're ready, but it was just showing that we reached out to that.
Okay.
Clean that base.
Now, the traffic peer review? Do you want to?
Yep, so, so from a traffic peer review, and I think, you know, Sean can, can speak to that, but we provided just a quick letter to you today, based on the, which I know you haven't read nor expect them to have. But we went through, we received the comments, and a quick response to them from the civil side of things. Just very, very minor comments. You know, number one just had to do with a first comment really had to do with right here, as cars are coming in, they weren't sure if there'd be enough room for cars to turn around and come out. There's, is a caved area that's located here to provide room. Based on that comment, though, what we're going to do is we'll provide some more room, I'm actually going to strike up a stall right here that you can't be parking, so if somebody comes in, they can back up this way, that way, so we will add that to the future plans. There's a question about the size of the docks, if they thought they were 11 and a half feet wide, there wasn't a dimension on there. They're actually 12 feet wide, we will add that dimension, but doesn't result in plan change, we'll dimension that just to show that they're 12 feet.
Will that reduce the number of docks?
No, 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 it's, it's the same, I think it was just.
I'm sorry, I had asked.
See, there was a question about the details, we had a strike area of eight feet on the accessible parking stall. The detail showed it as nine feet, it's just a it's not matching, we'll get those to match, the detail will change, not the site plan. And then the last comment really had to do with this area up, up front here. They weren't sure if this was a four foot walk, concerned about cars overhanging it, it's actually a five foot walk. We've got a five foot walk and a five foot landscape bed, which we feel is appropriate. I would rather keep it at five feet in the five foot landscape bed than make that walk the larger, shrink the landscape bed.
Okay.
Actually sounds like between four and five feet makes a difference in what you can plant there. And that was it on the civil related stuff, I'm going to turn it over to Sean and ask to talk on other items.
Thanks, John, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, again, Sean Kelly with the Nassian Associates. We did go through the comments that were issued by BSC Group in their review of the traffic study. They're, they're all pretty straightforward, you know, they'd asked if we had had any coordination with Mass DOT as part of our permitting efforts. Route 140 is under Mass DOT jurisdiction. And we will be subject to an access permit from the District 3 office. We did have an initial meeting with District 3 staff to review the project and look at some of the recommendations we had with respect to Mechanic Street and Maple Street. And then Mass DOT also took part in the MIPA scoping meeting that was held on the project as well, so we, we have had some coordination efforts with them. It was a question about vehicle queuing analysis, and I know a lot of the focus really is, is been on the southbound queuing on Maple Street and potential measures to, to improve that, the queue storage there. But as part of our assessment, we did look at the impacts on all of the other approaches as well, including eastbound on Mechanic, which was their, the issue they had raised. And what the analysis showed is that even utilizing the highest trip generation rates, if you may recall, we, we looked at this more as a high queue sort facility, not general warehouse space, which is really what it's sized for, but even utilizing that most conservative analysis with the highest generating use, you know, the, the average queues were increasing by less than one vehicle length during peak hours. There was a question as to whether or not, if there's a left turn restriction on Mechanic Street, we would have, you know, signage and, and again, it kind of falls back to the, this is a Mass DOT corridor, and ultimately, you know, there is a process where they review the access plan, including any pavement marking and signage that's required. But certainly if a restriction was in place, we would expect that a sign would be held either on the driveway or on 140 itself. And then the last question really dealt with the timing and phasing at Mechanic and Maple and whether we were proposing to change that. And, you know, quite frankly, we're, we're offering the town, as you know, a quarter of a million dollars towards traffic improvements. Modifying timing is a relatively low cost measure, and certainly if the town or MassDOT felt that it was warranted, those funds could be utilized to advance that as well. And that was really it in the traffic study. Be more happy to answer any questions now. Thank you.
I would refer your questions, Frank.
Flora, your sir? Sure, good evening, Frank DePietre from the BSC Group, and I had a long discussion with our traffic engineer, Bill Paley, so please excuse me if I'm playing a traffic transportation engineer this evening. I think, just listening to the responses, we want to take a look at, make sure that they're actually responding to the site things, they seem to be reasonable, but we'll certainly take a look at that letter that we haven't seen yet. With regard to the traffic impact assessment comments, a couple of things that sort of Bill and I talked about, and I believe Jim had some input into this as well. So one of the items that we understand has, has become sort of a question is that right now, my understanding is the quarter million dollars offered for improvements really look to address the through a lane going through the intersection. And there's a real question about, you know, would there be a benefit by increasing both the through lane and the turning lane? And I think that's something that we would be very happy to take a look at, we can certainly, we respond to that comment for the next planning board hearing. I think that's something that we want to be important to take a look at. The other question that came out of this was relating to the discussions with Mass DOT District 3. Again, thank you for providing us the information that they've had some initial discussions, certainly the MIPA scoping session and intermediate. The concern we have is that until Mass DOT sort of weighs in, a mitigation is just a plan, a concept, and really whatever's going to be proposed, it has to be reviewed by Mass DOT before it's going to go anyplace. And so while that's something that I think would be very good offer, at this point in time, until Mass DOT gives some blessing to this, if you will, some better direction, we're only in the, the beginning stages, and again, I would certainly defer it to the folks at Bowler to make sure that I'm not missing something. But again, I think there has to be more definition with Mass DOT to be able to say, this is what they'll allow, this was what they won't allow. You certainly won't have your highway access permit, but again, I think if there's a little bit more direction, contacts with the Master D that was provided, that information was provided to the board, it would help us to make a better decision overall. I'll be quiet now and not pretend to be a traffic engineer anymore.
How long a timeframe you think that will be?
Again, I think, we back up, Mass DOT is very busy. And it, it might take a little bit of time pulling stuff back and forth, but I think certainly folk could reach out. And certainly that may be something that the folks from Bowler, you know, would be involved in. I don't want to volunteer BSC to do that, I think it should be run through the applicant's engineers, would be happy to be part of that coordination.
I would appreciate that.
To the folks, the applicant for that.
Mr. Chair, if I could just speak to that, that was absolutely correct, what was, was presented. I, I think it was flipped, when I, I think we had thought that it made sense to put the, the turn lane in, but there was some discussion relative to would the through lane make, make more sense?
Okay.
So just a small point of clarification, but really, ultimately, the critical path of this project is going to be the DOT permit. DOT needs to issue a permit, DOT doesn't issue permits until we've got our approval, so they want to make sure you've got a site plan approval, then you move forward to DOT, you start that process. When they're slower, sometimes they can cheat it in a little bit, when they're busy like they are now, a lot of times they're very, no, get your local approvals, then we'll review the, you know, submit an application, then we'll review it. So what we're hoping to do is get some direction from the, the board and the town as to what they would like to see by way of mitigation. Again, we presented what we thought made sense, would be very interested in your peer reviews comments, if there's something they thought might, might make sense, does it generally work, the concept that, that we have, which we think it does. Once we've got that general consensus to say this is what we would like to do, we can then release our traffic engineers to actually make a, a design to submit to DOT. So we can reach out to try to get some input, but we haven't really had much luck, other than what we presented during MIPA, which showed, you know, talked about, you know, turn lane and stuff like that, and they didn't have any concern with it.
I'll try to summarize, I think we thought of you saying. And Jim, interject if I'm wrong. I think what Frank is trying to say is the, the initial offer is much appreciated. However, there could be something that the state says that could increase the, you know, the need for the town more than we anticipated. Is that a fair assessment of where, where we could be?
Yes, and again, I think this is highly unlikely, but maybe the state might say there's less needed, but that's just the, the point.
Right.
Need that correction from the state.
And, and Mr. Chairman, I think we're, we're close, we're not quite there yet, I did speak with BSC and, and Frank and, and Bill Paley. I, I think the, the one missing link from our peer review response was a little bit more detail as to whether or not the extension is necessary on left, right, middle, and, and whether they, you know, that's, that's a nice to have, or, or what have you. And then I think that's giving the applicant some direction, then to go to DOT, which the town certainly can play a role in, as well as help, help steer that along to get that more refined and get a little direction. DOT, I, I think everyone is absolutely correct in their statements that DOT likes to see local permits first, but will certainly offer some, some opinions if, if it looks like there's a strong opinion from the town that they want to see a certain direction. So I think we're pretty close to that, I think at the next meeting, BSC, I believe, will have a little bit further guidance for the board on that.
So in summary, the town, our peer reviewer, and the applicant are all on the same page on this.
Can I, it's Paul Feldman, I, I need a clarification, if it's okay, Mr. Chairman?
Certainly.
Good evening, everyone, Paul Feldman on behalf of the applicant. I just want to understand in my own mind, Mechanic Street is the state highway where DOT has jurisdiction. And the, the queue analysis and the traffic analysis shows that, you know, Mechanic Street is not being impacted. The, the concern that we heard when we, before the zoning board and some initial concerns we heard from this board was the southbound traffic along Maple Street. That's not a state highway, that's something that, you know, DOT is, you know, not going to particularly weigh in on.
Can we, one second, Sean, can we get clarification on that? I, I don't think that's entirely accurate.
Well, we're just, Jim, if I can, that's fine, I'm asking for clarification, and we, we can get Sean to, to do that, because that's what I'm trying to figure out here, that if, in fact, the planning board would like to see additional width to Maple Street. Certainly, that width, that width on Maple Street is not, is not jurisdictional from Mass DOT. When we get to the intersection, well, then it is, but the, right now, there's a right turn lane leading into that intersection, that's about 75 feet in distance. And what our traffic consultant has recommended is that right turn lane be extended so that cars that are coming south on Maple that want to make a right turn are not being held up by cars that are wanting to go straight. So they have to wait for the light to turn in order to be able to drop into that right turn lane, because the right turn lane is only 75 feet long at this point. Now, I, I, I understand it makes sense to look at, well, is the right turn lane that's going to be extended, or should we look at the, you know, what happens with the left turn lane? But all of those changes on Maple Street, and I, I always understood, and we can hear from Sean, needs to be determined locally. And then to the extent they affect the intersection, well, sure, there's going to be Mass DOT involvement, but I don't think there's any physical changes to the intersection itself that are planned, the changes are along Maple Street. So that's the clarification I'm interested in, and maybe Sean, you could help us out.
Sure, thanks, Paul, no, Paul, Paul is correct, so Route 140 is under state jurisdiction, and that runs the intersection all the way beyond the site to the east and west. But Maple Street, aside from, I suspect a very small portion that's, you know, where the curb returns occur, and with this traffic signal equipment, once, maybe, can I do a screen share, would that be possible, or?
Could be allowed for Sean to?
Yeah, it looks like I'm up right now. All right, can everyone see that all right? So this is, this is all state jurisdiction, Maple Street is local jurisdiction. There may be a small portion of Maple that extends up into this area with this, this, you know, things such as loop detection or signal equipment that's in the state jurisdiction. But certainly when you get up to this area, you know, all of this area here is in the town jurisdiction, so, so Paul is correct, this, this lane extension really would be a more of a local approval than a state approval. What we would post, I mean, I think you hit the nail on the head, is, you know, you, this right turn lane was built here, and what I suspect is that the state simply ran out of right of way, and there wasn't enough room to extend this lane. But this lane really has no, doesn't really function today, it has, during peak hours, certainly it has very little purpose. We showed the average queue in this, in this lane here, the maximum queue goes back 230 feet. So what effectively happens is this lane fills up, and then cars that want to make a right hand turn, you know, aren't able to do that. You have the, the left turn phasing here, where you get the, the right arrow to go with it, they basically are stuck back in this area, they can't get into that lane. What we had looked at as part of our work was was the show? Was to essentially take that right turn lane that exists today and extend it back, all the way back, so it's long enough that it extends as far as the through queue. And what that allows is this is actually a functioning lane now, even when cars are backed all the way up at the peak hour, you can get into that lane and make that right hand turn. Because today, you know, the lane, even though it's marked, essentially it, it doesn't, it doesn't function, the left and the through is really a one lane approach, because you can't get in the lane. So we had looked at this, and what it showed is that the operations for the self bound movement were improved dramatically, because now, you know, instead of operating as one, it operates as two. And I think that when, if, we can certainly provide BSC Group with all the, you know, technical backup and what have you, but I think it, you know, certainly demonstrates that adding that capacity and letting this be a functioning lane improves operations, you know, particularly during the, the peak hours.
And it's, and just to, to, the reason why I wanted this clarification is that it's precisely because Mass DOT is so backed up and so jammed, that the, the ability to get them to react is something that's not technically within their jurisdiction, is going to be very, very difficult. It's really, we really need the guidance from the planning board and from the planning board's consultant and our traffic consultant to decide, you know, you know, will extending that right turn lane improve the function of that intersection? We think it will. Just so, so we're clear, you know, it's not that our project is going to greatly impact the, the intersection, we're, what we're really trying to do is demonstrate. What we're really trying to do is demonstrate to the town that we're prepared to not only mitigate a problem with that intersection by giving the land that you need in order to create the extended lane, but we're actually prepared to to build the extension, relocate the utility poles, you know, build that that additional lane of traffic. That's where the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars comes from. And because Mechanic Street has already been studied coming out of our site, the question for the planning board and the applicant is indifferent about this. But the question for the planning board is, do you want to restrict a truck leaving the facility on Mechanic Street from making a left turn out of the facility in order to go toward 495 on Route 140? The applicant is open to directing all exiting truck traffic in a clockwise direction that need to go toward 495, out the Maple Street Drive for a right turn only, and then the truck would make the left turn at the intersection. But if the planning board felt that one way to add added relief to that intersection on Maple Street was to allow trucks to make a left turn out of our driveway, just like the abutting building trucks do, the trucks make left turns onto Mechanic Street all the time. If that was what the board preferred, then one of the things we would deal with with mass DOT is whether or not there's any, you know, lanes, lane striping or markings on 140 that should change or anything like that, that would certainly require mass DOT approval because that's their street, that's their road. They control that road. The other thing that the applicant was open to, and it was one of the comments in the BSC review, was, you know, whether the study should be done of the timing and sequencing of the lights. And, and as a result of that study, would there be any proposed changes to the timing or sequencing? Again, we could conclude that there are some proposed changes, and if mass DOT disagreed with us, mass DOT, mass DOT would rule the roost. But, you know, if we provided them the traffic data study backup that would suggest the intersection would perform better with timing and sequencing changes, we would expect mass DOT to be open to that, and we would then go ahead and implement. What we're trying to say is, our particular, this is, we understand this to be a, an intersection which, even though it was just rebuilt and it looks really good from the sky, we're told and we hear doesn't function as well as everybody would like. And because of our project, it creates an opportunity to spend quite a bit of money to get it to function better. And most of that effort is on Maple Street. It's not a DOT decision. It's a planning board decision with your consultant and our consultant. So I'd like to just ask that that dialogue occur right away because once there could be a meeting of the minds between Viness and BSC as to, you know, what should be done to to improve the intersection coming south on Maple Street, that's the driver. That's going to really let us, you know, get our site plan approval. And then we can go to mass DOT and talk about the minor things like road markings and timing and sequencing of the traffic lights that we would have to do with mass DOT. That's the reason why I wanted to have the clarification because it would really be detrimental to the applicant to send us off to mass DOT now when we really want to talk about Maple Street and what you guys want us to do to Maple Street.
Sure, thank you for the clarification. I think we're all better, we all have a better grasp on what to do next. Frank, do you have anything else you need to add?
No, I think in a way, if I understood what Mr. Feldman just said, we're sort of talking the same thing. That is, we're looking to get the board and the applicant, as well as both Viness and BSC to sort of come to an agreement that would give some direction to mass DOT. I mean, I think whether or not, you know, making the changes as they're talking about on Maple Street may require a modification of the signal timing at the intersection. I don't know that it's a very theoretical thing at this point, but it may. And therefore, that expansion would have some impact, it could have some feedback by a decision from mass DOT. So I think certainly we'll be looking to get a little update to you folks in the next week or so. And then this will be something we could talk at the next hearing if you'd like.
Okay, that would be great. I think that makes perfect sense to me, and I thank you for the clarification.
Sure, I can take it. Thank you. Anyone else?
My opinion?
Do you have any questions or comments?
Yes. Are we going to create a kind of a bottleneck? If they use, if they use to be able to come across out of this other one on Mechanic Street? Because they're going to have to, if they're going left, they're going to have to jump the lane. So you're going to have to coordinate everybody. If a guy doesn't want to let somebody go and he's backed up there, that truck's going to cut off that lane. We're going to wind up in a situation we kind of looked at at Lincoln Project where we needed a light. And I don't know if that would, I don't mind them maybe coming out and going to the right if need be.
Coming out further down.
Yeah, well, yes, exactly, out of that, except there he's talking about. The lane on Maple Street, I love that idea. You can extend that as far as you want. Just my opinion.
Again, we're perfectly, if the playing board wants to impose a condition that left turns out of Mechanic Street Drive are prohibited, we would abide by that condition and put a proper signage and not allow left turns out of Mechanic Street. Again, we, that's, that's an issue for the playing board to decide what it prefers. The applicant is indifferent on that issue.
Okay, thank you. So, so I agree with Dennis. I don't think left turns are possible with trucks there, so that's good. And while I think of it, it would help me immensely if I could see where the entrances are, if we stake them out, and I don't know if it's a full site visit. Might as well have us taken, why don't we have a site visit? So I can see, okay, the trucks are coming out here and the intersection is that way. That would be very helpful, if we can do that. So my understanding is the trucks would, I'm not good with directions. They would leave the facility onto Maple Street, take a right, that would be heading south, right? That's how they would be?
Yes.
Then the trucks would swing into, presumably, most of them would swing into the left turn lane to go towards 495. One of the, one of the things that I have observed there already is that there's about two and a half trucks distance of space in that left turn lane. Then we don't know who the occupant is and how the trucks will be released. But if there's more than two at one time, it's going to effectively block the existing left turn. If there's any other additional traffic, because the existing left turn lane starts as a triangle and then merges into a full lane. So I would be interested to see what the, how many trucks could actually fit? And how does the mechanics of the releasing of the trucks at this facility work in that cycle? In terms of potential issues that we need to look at. And then with regard to traffic traveling west to east, I think it's the direction from the center of town to 495 on Mechanic Street. What I observe now is that the the left-hand turn lane to turn onto Maple Street backs up fairly quickly because it's stubby because it shares, it's one of those flip lanes where if you're going in this direction, you can take a left to the gas station across the street, and further up, it flips over to, this is the lane given to go left. So that, that left turn lane going in that direction often backs up going towards 495. And then what happens is you have a bunch of people that want to go left, that can't get there, and then backs up the other lanes of traffic. So I don't know how many, I would imagine that trucks coming from the center of town back into the facility would go through that light, take a left, and then get back into the facility through Maple Street. I would be interested in looking at that. How that would work if there's additional trucks, one or two trucks that are queuing in that area going left at that place. And then in terms of the trucks, the vehicles leaving, the non-truck vehicles Mechanic Street, they can, so if I worked there, I can drive my car, I can take a right. I don't know if it's a good idea if I take a left, even if I'm in a car, because you're still crossing a bunch of lanes. So let's look at that. But are the, are trucks coming, are any of the larger trucks coming through the intersection and then turning into the, I guess they are, they're turning into the facility there? And is it going to be, and I imagine you've already figured this out, but as long as the trucks don't have to swing out, come back and turn right, there's enough swing space to go right in so the traffic keeps flowing through that intersection. Because if trucks are slowing down to make that turn, then perhaps there's a backing through the intersection. But again, I think this would all, if I could see, see the state that where all of this plays out, it would be very helpful.
Again, Mr. Chair, one point of clarification, everything I just listened to. I thought that, and I can't tell who's speaking because you guys are too small on the screen for me to figure that out. But I thought I heard the person say that trucks could turn into the facility off of Maple Street. That's, that's not right. That Maple Street driveway is going to be an exit-only driveway for trucks. You can't turn in, a truck can't turn in to the facility from Maple Street. The only way trucks come into the facility are off of Mechanic Street.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to confirm my understanding.
I think we've been working under that assumption from the beginning.
Okay, fair enough. I thought I heard the speaker say that a truck may turn in to the facility from Maple Street. Not a truck, cars, we will get to the, to the vehicle parking in front of the building in and out of the Maple Street driveway, but a truck won't be able to turn in. It's designed not to allow a truck to turn in.
So what we want to do is have on this warehouse, have all the access to the warehouse property coming off, on and off of Mechanic Street. And everything except turning right of the property, to go around the property and exit on Maple Street. Is that a correct assumption? There will be no left-hand turn coming out of the entrance.
That, if that's what the playing board wants, no left-hand turn, I'm sorry?
That's, I think we've already, that's been outlined before, correct?
Yes.
One clarification.
Yeah, just to be sure.
Yeah.
Just making sure. So the one clarification, so the truck traffic is all entering from Mechanic as discussed.
Yeah.
The employee traffic is coming from Maple.
Correct.
That's entering from Maple, so I just want to make sure that that's clear, entering and exit.
Correct, not, not, right, not exiting.
So no, no employee car, only trucks?
Yeah, we want to, we want to separate the trucks and the cars, so the, the, yeah, so the, so the cars are coming in and out from, from Maple.
Okay.
Okay, trucks are entering from Mechanic.
Okay.
So, right, but they can exit on to Maple.
They have to.
Correct.
Unless they're going right. Unless they're going right onto Mechanic Street from the main.
Correct.
And I know I'm calling it an entrance, the main exit entrance. But most of the vehicles will enter the facility from the location on Mechanic Street, other than at Mores. And they'll be prohibited from doing.
Oh.
All right.
Could you put that on your, your device that friends enter, exit?
Yeah, just the label, so.
Exactly, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. So one of the things you can't see from this drawing is, is the lane, the three lanes, the coming out of Maple Street, heading towards Mechanic Street. And I guess I've, I've got the same concern that if you're coming, if the trucks are coming out of your Maple Street exit, they've got to cross, you know, where point do you have the three lanes going all the way back? If you put that other drawing up?
Yeah, Sean had that.
Yeah, the one we were looking at before, because that's what I wanted to see, where that, and I think that we've heard that too, but where the entrance or the exit is with the trucks crossing over three, you know, the other two lanes to get to the turn line to go 495. I can't see it with, with the drawing that you have there. So is the approximate site of the exit on there?
Yes, it gets cut off in the bottom left, but it's approximately right where Rapid refilled.
Yeah, can you show me on that, right, right?
It's cut off.
You can't see it.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I mean, I guess my concern is on Maple Street. If the trucks are exiting your facility on Maple Street.
You show us where?
Yeah, can you show us where on that drawing?
Yeah, it would be.
It would be above it.
Right, yeah, the lanes, the lanes go back about two hundred and sixty.
They're going to go into one lane and that's.
It's beyond that, right. So they're not crossing over multiple lanes when they enter.
Yeah, they, they.
The one single lane, and then that one single lane comes down into this and gets the button.
You know, can I make a suggestion? John, if you could put up your building, you could show approximately how long with, when the lanes start to widen out, and it's going to be about two-thirds of the distance down the building. The driveway is beyond that, so the trucks will turn on to Maple Street onto the, onto the lane of traffic that's available at that point. And then like every other vehicle going south on Maple Street, you know, either go into the right lane, the left lane, or the center lane. Now, we don't expect any of our trucks to go into the right lane, because if somebody really, the truck really wanted to go right, they wouldn't go to the Maple Street intersection. They would just make a right turn onto Mechanic Street, skip the whole intersection. So the trucks are either going to go straight, or as you, as it was correctly pointed out, almost all the trucks are going to be making a left. And going to 495.
I guess in a future meeting, can we have a drawing that, that just shows where the driveway is, where
Yeah.
all the lanes are, and I think, I agree with you, maybe we need to see it too, but I would like to see a drawing.
Yeah, we can, I'd like to have three D's, so we can look at it from above and straight up.
We, we understand, we can prepare that for you, and we will.
At least you freaking can do.
Yeah, what we'll do, we'll take, we'll give Sean our, our site plan to put it onto that, his lane striding plan, so you can see exactly where those are. And if the board can let us know what date they'd like to go out there, I can have everything staked out prior to them. I don't want to put the stakes out too early, because a lot of times they get torn out or whatnot.
I think what we may want to do on that, and we can discuss that probably at the next meeting, is I want to make sure the, we have a police officer there because I suspect we could be walking on, back and forth on Maple Street and crossing the street. And when you put the stakes, since we're looking at a long distance, we're going to need the flags up fairly high that morning so we can visualize, you know, two hundred and fifty feet down the road, another two hundred and fifty feet down the road, the entrance on Mechanic Street. So we get a proper perception of the depth and the distance of what we're dealing with. And then we'll touch, Jim or someone, we'll talk to make sure it's safe for us walking back and forth across the street, because we could slow traffic back for a few moments, most likely on a Saturday. Ron?
Are you done?
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So I guess regarding the curb cuts, so Mechanic Street trucks are entering, and they can turn right at that curb cut to go towards the center of town. That's what I understand, correct? And no left turn, which, for trucks, or any vehicle actually, I guess. And that's going to be, you're thinking signage to, posting signage to say, do not turn left.
Correct, so, so obviously, at the car, at the car lot, we can. Correct, so, so obviously at the car, at the car lot, we can be very clear, you know, right turn only, you know, do not enter and stuff like that. They know not to loop around the building, it's a truck, or because operationally you don't want that. Up at the Mechanic Street exit, obviously for geometry, you can't restrict, you know, a left, a left turn, you know, something to do it if they, if they wanted to, but so it has to be down signage. That would be very clear on, on signage, and we can also just make sure the signage is off the site as well, to say, now if you want to head to, you know, 495 or 140, whatever direction, you know, use Maple Street. So we can add advanced signage as well, so, so folks know which way to go.
Gotcha.
We'll, we'll work with, with Rashawn to come up with what, you know, what directional signage makes the most sense.
I guess just my one comment would be, I've heard numerous of these meetings from the butters saying that, you know, there's there's conditions regulating truck traffic, there's signage up, and still vehicles are going where they want. And I get it, I mean, people are gonna go where they want to go, and it's tough to regulate, even, you know, not everyone follows signage. So if it's possible, especially at the Mechanic Street curb cuts, it's gonna be very difficult to do it, I think, at the, yes, Maple Street curb cut, not Mechanic Street, Mechanic Street's gonna be difficult to do this, but to try and design the curb cut to make it so a truck, it's impossible for them to take a left turn.
A truck to go left on Maple, is what you're saying.
Exactly, to start going in the residential area, so reducing the radius of the curb cut, potentially. I don't know how it would work, I can't really visualize it right now, but even potentially a raised center island, potentially, to separate entrance and exit. So that way, if a truck did want to go to Maple Street, they'd have to, it's not gonna fare well on their wheels if they're jumping a frantic curb, so, just items to look at. I don't think if you have vehicles entering and exiting at Mechanic Street, I don't see how it would be possible to do that there, it'd have to be through signage. Yeah, so unless it was an entrance only, but I can understand the issue having it.
Yeah, yeah, it would just put pressure on the intersection, it wouldn't.
Yeah, I, yep, I get it, absolutely. And then additionally, I think to Brian Dennis's point regarding stacking on the street or queuing, correct? That's what you guys are bringing up. I know, so right now, there's no tenant yet selected, correct? So we don't really know what size trucks are gonna be entering and exiting the site. It could be WB50, WB67, it could be SU30, it could be box truck, you know, who knows? So I guess when you're looking at the queuing, could you please just look at the most restrictive that you think could potentially be entering the site? So. Oh yeah, and one other comment that's a little bit, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
That's not really, I listened into the, the Conservation Commission meeting last night, which was continued, but there was one comment that they just requested, or it's gonna be brought up at the next Conservation Committee meeting, regarding snow storage. So just fair warning that, when you're doing the site plan, they're probably want to see that.
Yeah, we, we received that comment our first, first hearing with the commission, that's one thing we wanted to show working.
Absolutely.
Get all the comments and put it on that set of plans.
Absolutely.
Thank you though for that.
No problem. You're next.
Well, I think everyone's kind of talked all the issues to death, so I don't have any questions, but I, I think I need to see it, so Sightwalk is good. I would suggest, and I know this is probably difficult for everyone's schedule, we really should go down at a peak queuing time, not a Saturday morning.
Yeah, that's, I just thought less, with impact traffic, less walking around, that was.
I agree, but I don't think we'll see the full impact unless we're there on a Wednesday at four o'clock or something like that, which I know can be difficult to coordinate with everyone's schedule. But that would be my preference, because those are the times that I notice, when I'm going through there, those are kind of peak times.
That's very fair.
So can I just make maybe a suggestion for that? I think that's a good point. Why don't they stake it, we have a site visit on a Saturday, and then leave the stakes there, and then we can add our, whenever we.
Use your go back or some video it or something.
Yeah, yeah.
Sure.
So then people will just do that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just one, one comment in response to what the board member just said about prohibiting that left turn by trucks out onto Mechanic Street, and I, I, I understand people drive where they drive, but what I, what we can offer, and I, and I don't know if this is what the planning board normally does in Bellingham, but it, it's, could be a good practice, but, and it, and it does help that situation, is when it's a condition of our site plan approval that that left turn is prohibited, just the planning board should require us to include in any lease document that we make with any of our tenants, that that left turn prohibition be specifically called out in our lease, so that if we have a tenant who's a chronic offender, and we get a call from the town saying, hey, your tenant is making a left turn, we'll have, we'll have the legal rights set out from the lease, that they're violating their lease if they do that. So on, on this subject, you know, I'm offering to include the no-left-turn prohibition in the lease instruments that we make with our tenants, and you could require that in your permit.
Is that a common feature that you put in lease documents?
You know, I, sometimes, it's not that common, I don't understand why boards, I do a lot of this work and appear maybe in front of 100 cities and towns in the, in the Commonwealth, I don't know why I don't see it more often, but there are times when boards, when there is a condition like that, an operational condition, you know, just require the property owner to include that operational condition in their lease to the tenants. I mean, it's, it's a condition of our permit, we got to abide by it, we should be making our tenants abide by it by putting it in the lease, and if they violate it, they're breaching the lease. I, I, again, that's, I can't say that there won't be some truck driver who goes where he wants. I'm not saying that. I agree with the comment made by the board member that people do what they want to do, even when there's a posted sign. But if it's chronic, and it really becomes, and it, it starts creating a problem for the town, that gives everybody a mechanism to have it addressed, and I just wanted to point that out, that that's something you could require of us, and we'd be objected by, by my client, and if it's a, a tool that the planning board finds useful in other circumstances, great, you'll, you'll use it when you see fit.
Just one follow-up question, how enforceable is that if you sell the building to a new owner?
Well, it's a condition, if it's a condition of the site plan, then it's, then that runs with the land, so that's a condition to every owner. If it's a condition in our site plan that you can't make a left turn, and if there's an added condition that says, and any lease made by the owner shall include that prohibition in the lease instrument, well, that's, every owner's gonna have to do that, if we sell the building or not, your site plan approval runs with the land as a, as a title requirement. They don't, be there in perpetuity.
Thank you.
So I, I appreciate that. I wanted something, going back to what Rob said, where it's almost difficult without damaging the vehicle to not go left. I don't want people turning right. Jim, in regards to prohibiting left turns and access from current warehouses in Bellingham, what's your experience, Ben? We've tried that, correct?
Right, we, we have done similar methods, as Mr. Foman had mentioned, just north of Maple Street there, and, and also the, the, the barriers to potentially damage tires. I mean, some, we might hear from the public who might say otherwise, but I think overall, it's been fairly effective. There's been minimal truck drivers. I will say, Mr. Foman is absolutely right, there's certainly the odd, odd truck that is gonna not take, not gonna read the 20 signs they pass that says, don't take a left, but you know, the vast majority of them, I think, are abiding by it when, when it's done right in terms of site plan and in terms of proper restrictions in place.
I suspect when we open up the public, we'll hear some concerns that people have turned the runway onto Maple and High Street, facing some of our current warehouses, and we try to control it as best we can. That's all the comments I have. Frank, before I turn over to the public, do you have anything else you want to add?
No, I think this has been very productive in, in sort of giving us a direction, so I'm, I thank everyone for that.
So I would like to turn it over to the public for what has been discussed this evening so far. Jim?
Mr. Chairman.
Was that Mike O'Hara, Mike?
Yeah, Mike, Mike stands for the double hat, it looks like.
Yeah, the double header, yeah. Yeah, I have a couple of questions, thanks. So now it seems clear that the truck, the proposal of the applicant is to provide trucks, all trucks entering only in through the Mechanic Street. That was, that's, not, yeah, Mechanic Street, sorry, it's clarified. The, the restriction of the trucks going out of that entrance, leaving the site and only being able to turn right, makes me wonder, how does that jive with what was approved, I believe, in the way of restrictions for the warehouse just down the street, the, I forget who signed, Cisco, not Cisco, the, the large warehouse, it's just.
Lincoln National.
What's that?
Lincoln National Warehouse.
Is it Lincoln National? It's, it's got a new sign out saying that they're, they're. Yeah, okay, well, that, that, the one that's gonna have the light put in it, opposite Curtis Apartments. I think that we spent a lot of time, the planning board spent a lot of time restricting the trucks from going towards the center of Bellingham, that they, the drivers were gonna be instructed to leave that entrance onto Mechanic Street and only turn left, that's why there was gonna be a light there, in fact. So I thought part of it was, we just didn't want a lot of truck traffic going into the center of Bellingham for a lot of reasons, then going all the way up 126 to get to 495 or whatever, and that most of the trucks would want to get to 495. It seems to me that some of the trucks are gonna want to do that, and then they're gonna come up to this center of town after going through two different lights, and, and then to get the headlights center of town. Is that a change in direction of the planning board? Are you okay with having trucks being directed out of Mechanics, onto Mechanic Street and only being able to turn towards center of town? I'm not an advocate of left turns, don't get me wrong. I think that'd be crazy. I've been through that intersection over the last 30-plus years commuting over several thousand times, so I'm very familiar with it at all different times, and a left turn of trucks out there right opposite Rapid Refill would be a nightmare. But I just want to make sure I'm clear, so the understanding is, is there a change in the planning board's view that trucks going towards the center of town are okay?
I don't think we're saying it's okay. What I think we're trying to do is try to reduce the impact on Maple Street as best we can.
Right, I, 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 yeah, I agree with that, okay, so if they do.
I don't think, like, in an ideal world, I don't know if we can do both. You know, perhaps we can, but we're trying to be hearing from the neighbors on Maple Street, and we'll be hearing for a while.
Yeah.
Getting vehicles crossing, it's, it's in a queue-up traffic a lot more on Maple Street. If everything went out onto Maple Street.
Right.
And we anticipate that it may be infrequent vehicles that will go through the center of town.
Right.
Based on the location of where we are, the advantage of this property is easy-on, easy-access to 495 and the exit. So our, our intent, attempt, intent is to hopefully direct the traffic, I'll be unpopular again, through Franklin, so to speak.
So speaking about Maple Street, the, all the trucks are coming out, that are coming out and turning right on Maple Street. They are turning before it becomes the three, three lanes wide, I understand that. What is the turn radius of 18-wheeler? Does anybody know that? Because unless you're widening Maple Street as you get up towards where I believe the entrance would be, I'd have to look at on the staked up site, site when you actually stake it out. That road is not particularly wide, and I have a tough time picturing 18-wheeler making a smart 90-degree turn without cutting over into the other side, the other lane in that, in that area. You're only two lanes wide at that particular point, correct? One going north and one going south.
I believe so, sir.
Okay, so I just bring that up, I, since nobody, throughout how wide 18-wheeler is, my next question is gonna be, how wide are the lanes there in that area where it's gonna be turning out of the exit of the site? That's a safety concern, obviously, crossing the line would be a big slamming on the brakes for people who are zooming north on Maple Street, having been thrilled that they got through the, the lights there and on their way home. And also, it would also stop traffic, obviously, suddenly. The trucks turning into the Mechanic Street entrance, having just come through the lights, what's the distance between the lights and that entrance gonna be? Anyone? Two, two truck lengths, one truck length, does anybody know?
I think it's more than that, sir.
Yeah, it's a little more than that.
A little more than that? My concern.
I think it's a lot more, Mike.
A lot more, okay. Again, let, showing that on, when you have it all laid out, there would be a great visual for.
We'll have it more later in the next meeting.
Yeah, I think that'd be really helpful, and a 3D site plan, certainly with all that marked out and trucks going out. I'd be worried about trucks stop, stop, coming to a stop as they turn in, they're not gonna wheel in at 45 miles an hour, road speed is, and just not slow down traffic, so there'll be a lot of cars stomping on the brakes again, not anticipating that this truck is, because they're not paying attention, as people aren't usually doing when they're driving. I'm, I'm concerned about safety, primarily, that, you know, trucks are turning in suddenly, they weren't anticipating that, people are slamming on the brakes, and then truck, traffic starts backing up. The, the traffic study itself, I did some reading of it, I didn't finish reading all of it thoroughly, but I understand it refers to them doing a pre-COVID traffic, getting pre-COVID traffic numbers, and also doing a baseline of one day in April of 2021, I believe it was, for a couple of hours in the morning, a couple hours in the afternoon to, to get a baseline. And it does say that they're referring to the other property developments in the area, but I don't see anything delineating how much traffic they think is coming from all of these different sources, Curtis Apartments, Amazon's warehouse adds a tremendous amount of traffic coming down Maple, but Mechanic Street, the, the new Red Mill project of residuals going in as well as the warehouse, all the existing traffic, and a large number of the Amazon vehicles, by the way, do go straight through the intersection to get gassed up. I imagine some of the trucks will want to do that as well, coming out of this facility, get gassed up right across the Rapid Refill, since they are, do have diesel set up for trucks. So you're gonna get a mixture of trucks going in different directions, but I, is that information available, how they came up with the specific numbers, the traffic site, just as they did?
We, we can still.
You address that?
Yeah, so, so, there's a couple of questions there, I think I'll try to do each one of them. So when we spoke with the, the planning department, one of the concerns was that some of the volumes that here may have been impacted by COVID, and then some of the volumes, you know, post-COVID were higher because of Amazon. So what we did is we took basically a hybrid, we looked at the counts that were done pre-COVID before any, there was any adjustment in terms of volumes being dropped because of the pandemic, then we did new counts that included the traffic associated with the Amazon facility, and, and basically, in any instance where the pre-COVID volumes were higher, took those volumes and adjusted them up even higher and used them for analysis, so we really use the worst case for all movements. So, so the Amazon traffic's in there, it was included in our counts, and then again, any instance where, it was really on 140, with, the through traffic was higher, we used that as well. We can certainly provide all the backup data for all the projects that we included, but, but quite frankly, it's, it's pretty straightforward. We took their studies, we looked at what their projections were, how much traffic was going through this intersection in each movement, and we added that in, so that's all been incorporated in there as well. I think that may have been it. I don't recall if there's another question, I think, I think it was most of the counts and then, and the data, to be, the distribution.
Right, we don't, we don't know.
Do you concur?
Pretty, pretty much, if the information gets made available.
Excuse me for one second, Frank?
Yeah?
Do you agree with what was said by the applicant?
I, I would, I mean, the data that I've been hearing is Mast D O T has said. I I would. I mean, the data that I've been hearing is Mast D O T has suggested to use traffic data pre-COVID two thousand sixteen, two thousand nineteen. And obviously, if you've got a new tenant that's a high traffic generator like Amazon, I think that would be the right thing to do to try to compare the two and be conservative.
Thank you.
My concern would be, yeah, my concern would be two thousand sixteen, there was not a lot of the stuff that's currently there along what both mechanic street and Maple Street as far as. Development, trucks, and so forth, so.
Mr. Chairman, I just clear, just to clarify, so what Mr. Kelly had mentioned, he spoke to the planning office a few years back when this. Was originally being proposed and and I gave him all of those developments. So the the red mill, the Curtis. One sixty mechanic street, the Amazon Snyder, all all those, I I tried to grab as many as I can and Sean would push me away, but I. I I certainly, he certainly has all all the new developments that are being proposed.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you. One other anecdotal point, the traffic has not come back to what it was pre-COVID, but it has certainly increased as I commute from. The Franklin train station coming towards that intersection on one forty. Traffic pre-COVID, a couple of years back during its peak rush hours, that come in bursts, like pretty much every time a train lets off, you get four. Hundred, two hundred cars that are zooming down the road, a lot of them westbound to go one direction or another through that intersection. The traffic used to back up as far as the Franklin, almost the Franklin Forest Park entrance, certainly back to Grellik. It is not always back that far, but during certain trains and certain times of the day in the afternoon rush, it will get that far back. The reason I'm mentioning that is all these people having literally passed them on my bike or been in a car occasionally. Want to get through that intersection rapidly. And while you're extending the right turn lane coming down south Maple or Maple Street there. And south direction, that's great. That allows more people to queue up who also want to turn onto one forty and head in the same direction that these people. The majority of them are coming through that intersection straight through on one forty. There are some left turners, but most of them are straight through and not too many turn right. Those people are going through that intersection. There's not a, there is not a no turn on red. Sign or indicator there, I believe, correct? So they're just going to do what anybody does nowadays when they're in a hurry to get wherever they want to go, which is take that right as soon as they think they've got the distance. If you put a truck entrance shortly beyond that right hand turn, I know it may seem like a ways down, but. When you're stepping on the gas, trying to cut, looking back to your left at the traffic coming from Franklin. Tried to cut in there because they have the light, but you got the right turn lane, so you're going to try to do it. And you zip in there and there's a truck that just came through that intersection. You have no clue that they've just basically coming to a stop to turn into that entrance. There's going to be some problems. I can almost guarantee it. And. I know that eventually they're all going to get past that entrance, but then what they're going to do is end up getting to a light, which is, I don't know, Jim, two two thousand yards down the street. At the new warehouse entrance and then another light just beyond that at the Blackstone Street. So there's going to be traffic backing up along there too. And I don't want to make it. Seem to some of the people who may not know better or may not think better, that widening and lengthening lane is great for right turns, but all it doing is doing is feeding into a situation right at the intersection there. Especially, as I said, when a truck is turning right and stopping traffic as it turns into the right hand lane there, into the entrance rather on the right. As well as the lights further down. There could be very well, we'll have to see during rush hours. Traffic stopped at that light at the top of the hill just by Curtis Apartments, backing almost all the way up to the to the intersection lights, or maybe not, maybe they'll be signalized and. And 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 it'll be great, but. With all the extra cars and coming out of Curtis now and all this, I can tell you right now, it's it's a terrible intersection to add more traffic to of any such sort. And I know it may only be an incremental increase to the developer and the applicant, but. To the people living and traveling through that area, it's going to make it substantially worse. No matter what you do, almost. I mean, it's just, it's great for access if you're getting out of that spot, but it is, it's just pouring more traffic into a difficult situation and. That one that we can see has got hundreds more cars coming up in the next year or two as these other sites come online. I won't talk anymore, but any waste time now. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public? Mr. Martinez? Jim, anyone, anyone else have their hand raised?
No, I don't see anybody else with their hand raised.
Thank you. It appears we probably need to move this forward to April fourteenth. I'm sorry. Will that give you enough time? To do, get the information you need? And then we'll get, you can talk to Jim, and based on tonight, we can try to scope out what we think we're looking for. Is that a fair assessment? And then hopefully between now and then, we can try to do at least one walk through. But I think it would it would be helpful. To look at things. From a three D standpoint, Google viewpoint, maybe before we even do a walkthrough, just sort of a better idea. Based on what has been discussed tonight. So we get, you know, the make the most opportunity of our site visits. That sounds like there will be two, one at peak hour and one maybe on a Saturday morning. And we can try to coordinate that. Are we thinking it's appropriate? So I would entertain a motion for continuance to April fourteenth, unless anyone else has any questions. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have motioned the floor to continue two oh six mechanic street warehouse to April fourteenth. Second, I'm on the agenda.
We have one fifty-two depot first, so this would be second, and if you put prospect at the third.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, the floor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Don't worry, it's been a long evening for a few of you. I want to thank you very much. The people in the public, Mike and Don and everyone else. Cassie, I want to thank you all for your input. The applicants, I want to thank you for your input as well. Thank you very much and have a safe drive home. And we all had a chance to review the minutes from the March third, twenty twenty-two meeting.
Yeah.
Yes.
Second page, third paragraph, two question marks. Construction base with two question marks.
Okay.
Mr. Mr. Lucier questioned that there was a condition regarding the construction base.
That explains what I said, so people are questioning.
That's phase, I'll let you know.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Amy's catching on.
Sorry, interrupt you.
Great job.
I I was not there, so I cannot vote, correct?
You can vote on the minutes, because you've signed.
Okay. All right, me too.
You did too.
All right, motion the floor to approve the minutes from the March third, please signify by saying aye.
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 opposed.
I'm sorry. In a second, that motion passes unanimously. Ron, it's yours.
I haven't moved the votes.
No, don't you say, yeah, motion the floor.
Does Jim have anything else more you want to say?
Anything else you want to say?
I have nothing else to say, no.
Frank will let you.
We keeping you up, Jimmy?
No.
Motion the floor to adjourn. Please say by saying aye.
Second.
Third.
Thank you.
Good night, guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.